Welcome to the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and also to the Department Heads. We appreciate you coming to give us your insight. What we're going to talk about today is we're going to talk about, a little bit about what we've come up with so far in terms of getting information out to people. So we'd like your feedback and comments on that. And if there's other things that we haven't thought of yet, we would welcome your input and opinions. So how about if we just introduce our, well, does everybody know everybody? No, they don't. I know one person that doesn't know everybody. My name is Scott Bugby.
I'm John Tappin.
Tricia Jenkins.
John McCores.
Ben Jeans.
How about the Department Heads and the other select persons?
Karen Brown.
Stuart Warner.
Scott Nenham.
Karen Rossi.
Amy Steger.
Ruth Acton.
Yep. Thank you very much. So the first thing, we were charged with providing the information to the public about the condition of the town buildings and to also educate them about the proposal that's out for addressing those particular issues at the town center. So one of the things that I brought pictures of, there he is.
Here I am.
Of some of the particular issues, but one of the things that we want to do is to go through what the committee's come up with so far in terms of getting information out. We've had a conversation and Ruth is amenable to us putting displays in the library.
I have an addition to that. When I was first talking to Ruth and thought about this, I was thinking that these were a display that was up for a week or two and then we have another one that goes up. And so we would have boards that we take down the old one and change what's on. Just this evening, I thought, no, we should keep each one and then bring them all to the deliberative session to have the, because there will be fewer imaginable people at the deliberative session that will not have seen any of them.
Well, how much space do we have?
No, the idea was at the library, there would just be one or two.
Oh, okay.
But then instead of dismantling that and putting other pictures or other information on it, we keep it. Maybe it goes up some other place temporarily like Town Hall, but in particular, we keep it for the deliberative session so that we can have the whole progression of all the topics that those have covered.
Oh, that's the other thing. I was instructed to ask the Board of Selectmen for $200. They gave us $2,000. So we can spend it until it's gone and then we can ask for some more. So I told them that it would make the whole committee giddy. So hopefully, somebody's giddy. So we could use that for our supplies and if we do a mailing, that will cover at least that particular cost. The other thing we talked about is putting a mailing out. I contacted the supervisor of the checklist to get a copy of that. So that's something that they're working on. And that would be mailed to everybody in town. We talked about doing a video or a documentary, getting one of the students possibly from the high school that does media to see if they would do that for us, possibly interviewing some townspeople in terms of the condition of the buildings. Of course, putting something out in the eccraer, articles about the particular condition of the buildings and the proposal. Bulletin boards, we talked a little bit about this in terms of doing one in the library, but other locations that we could put them up. We talked about putting it up in Market Basket, the Flackville Wandering, the Credit Union, both of them, the hardware store and Sunny's Restaurant. Website, of course, the town's website, and also having public meetings where we could present the conditions of the buildings and also the proposal. And at least I have some question, excuse me, question and answers. The most adventurous one we thought of is doing a display at the transfer station and have people there showing like condition of the buildings and maybe a quick handout. People are there very quickly, so it has to be something that's really, really quick. Those are the things we came up with. And in terms of pictures, I don't, I only brought one set, but.
Sure.
Randy won't have to look at him because those are his pictures.
Those are all underneath Town Hall.
Yep. So the gentleman in the white suit is not the working man. He's Mr. Stevens. So if you can't recognize him. And those are just in the Town Hall. I don't have any of all this stuff.
Damn it.
Like for instance, I can pass this around to you. This is the structural report that we got. So I can pass that around. There's some pictures in the back, too. Other thing that I have, I passed it out to all the Department Heads just for your We made a proposal to the church for $50,000 for about a little over three acres. They came back, they proposed to us the 5.4 acres, which includes the parsonage. The Board of Selectmen rejected that and at last night's meeting, we kind of reversed ourselves.
Ameliorated.
Ameliorated. I like that word. I don't know if I like that word because I have to do the minutes.
Good work.
So I've been asked to, or I volunteered to go back to the church and I contacted them last night about opening negotiations and seeing if we can go back to that proposal and see if we can come to some kind of understanding. Also, in terms of what I have passed out, this is something that John did us, did for us, John Tappin. It basically creates a conforming lot out of the land that the parsonage sits on now. It gives them 250 feet of frontage and it adheres to the 25-foot side setbacks. So we're going to look at both of those and see if we can make either one of those work. Karen, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Does this look okay to you in terms of planning board proving that particular?
The assumption built in there was that the church would tear up or dig up that parking space so that their side would have the required setback.
Yeah, without doing any test fitting or anything, yes, preliminary looks fine.
Are you reopening discussions on this proposal or on the whole, the whole previous comment from the church?
I think, it's my understanding, I'm exploring both of them.
Okay. Because last night, the church had a governance meeting, monthly governance meeting, this was on the agenda, the drawing that they had gotten.
The previous one?
You and Karen, me. Jim Banks was there.
Yep.
So they were talking about moving the line over more closer to the parking lot because, but they were, I think they were going to, you know, contact, contact you about this proposal.
Mm-hmm.
So they have interest.
Yep.
But I should probably let them know that to not have Kim, the attorney, write something up if you guys want to talk about both.
I contacted Jim Banks and Mr. Duval last night.
Okay.
So hopefully, they'll get back to me.
Was it like after nine o'clock?
Well, it was after I got out of this meeting. I think it was like 10:00 or something.
Okay, good. We met at nine, so, okay, that's post the meeting. Okay, good.
So hopefully, we can have a conversation.
Good.
I'm not sure where the church is in terms of which one they would like the best or to like to explore both of them with us.
Yeah, well, and, you know, this is just from what I, from what I know, the church, the people that you're talking to, the people in the governance, have the congregations vote to do the whole thing. But if it got broken up, the interpretation was that it doesn't require another vote. So if the parsonage turned back, that would be okay. You know, because the whole thing was, the vote was, go ahead and sell the land and the parsonage. So somehow, they worked, you guys worked something else out.
Okay.
Of that footprint. They didn't necessarily, knowing that you have, that there's a timing issue for anything happening. And you can talk to Jim and Bill Duval and those guys and see what they, but that's kind of the way the governance board addressed it. They didn't feel like they had, you know, like you had to run and get another congregation vote, which is two-week notice and all that other kind of stuff.
Well, the other thing I ask for, if they're amenable to continue discussing it, is to get a walkthrough of the parsonage so we can have professionals come in and give us an idea in terms of if there's anything that's salvageable and the cost to tear the building down. Because we're not sure, at least I'm not sure if there's anything hazardous in there that we have to deal with. Asbestos, it's my understanding that there's lead paint to be dealt with. So the idea was to see if we could get in.
It's a 150-year-old house, right?
So. But if you see them.
Well, the only thing, the only thing, the way the governance, because I'm on the finance side for the church, but the only thing that was resolved was the congregation voted on the, on selling that, therefore, in negotiations with the town on some variation on that, keep going. Doesn't need another congregation vote, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. That's good news.
And Jim, Jim Banks was there, so he's a good person to get some more info from. But this is a different drawing than what was there last night. The line on the right-hand side of the 25-foot of the parsonage was closer to the parsonage.
Yeah, this, this is the last one that they have that I provided when I met with them in Karen's office. But this is the one that John did up because we spoke about possibly moving the line, so.
Yes, yeah, that one last night. And the church actually talked about, well, that, wouldn't they want it to be over that way more and this way? So actually, they were going to come back and offer that.
So yeah, if they come back and say, you know, they want to continue, which it sounds like they will, I'll give them a copy of this, too, so they can see that.
Yeah, that, because Jim was the one who was saying, this all needs to be slid over for.
But it doesn't change the, does it change the boundary line between the parsonage property and what will be the future town property?
I don't think so.
The 25-foot.
Okay. Just want to let you know that there was some voting done about and getting Karen, Kim involved. And so they, we didn't even do that yet.
Well, this is, this is kind of an imaginary drawing.
Yeah.
That if you wanted to create a lot that was essentially to it or not.
Yeah, it was the intent to show.
Getting closer than this, which it was going to be part of the way.
The intent was to show the church, well, the way we interpreted it was intent was to show the church that you guys went back, did some calculations, and were offering something where the church still gets a legal lot in, you know, to do whatever they wanted to keep it or, but then they would have something if they wanted to. That's the way they interpreted it.
Does anybody have any questions? We kind of run an informal meeting, so if you have a question, raise your hand and you can be recognized, but.
Is there an appraisal that's been done on this property or how are you coming up with these numbers?
In terms of what the church countered, their counterproposal, I believe they went out and got an appraisal.
Randy?
Mammy's question is, how did you come up with the number, how did $370,000?
How did either of the numbers come up?
Yep.
Well, the church worked with the realtor. I don't know. I don't have any details, but there was a committee within the church, the facilities committee, worked with the realtor, they did, you know, looking at the.
I'm aware of that kind of thing, so it was.
But that's what they did to get their number.
Okay. And what did the town do as far as the original offer?
We had a consultation with our Ms. Rossi and that's the number we came up with. We thought it was a reasonable number because basically, it's a non-conforming lot, but in the original piece that we proposed, because there was no frontage, so it was really a non-conforming lot and we don't do those. So that's the amount they came up with. But no, we didn't do an appraisal because, and I believe Karen, it would, he would have, somebody would have a hard time doing appraisal because it wasn't a non-conforming lot.
Yeah, when you do an appraisal, you do it with comps, so.
It would have been hard. Any other questions? So this is the time when the Department Heads can shine. If you have any particular ideas or comments in terms of the methods or mechanisms we've kind of outlined in terms of what we'd like to do, your thoughts in terms of what would work, what wouldn't work, any other ideas that you might have, or anybody?
I have a couple of questions.
First of all, I'd like to hear from the committee what their view is with respect to going for the whole thing or just shooting for this piece without the parsonage.
Individually?
Whatever the committee wants to say, just their opinion. I think they'll have Scott, so further negotiation goes on.
My opinion is that we should go for the whole, the whole thing. This is probably the only opportunity that we'll get to get more land around the town And I would like to see particularly with the, with the setback restrictions, the wetland restrictions, the different problems that you run into on the smaller lot, I'd like to see the, the whole piece rather than the smaller piece.
Is that, is that, is that a combined vote of the committee?
That's my opinion.
The committee hasn't had a chance to, opportunity to talk about it as a committee, so we can always speak as, you know, each one what we think. My opinion is that we should purchase the whole 5.4 if we can. A piece of it is, a significant piece of it is making it available for the future for the next town center facilities committee 25 or 30 years from now. I think it's, it's an opportunity that is not going to come up again if we either don't purchase anything or purchase only part of it. By purchasing all of it, it gives us those, it gives the town the options for the future and it helps you control, gives you control over the appearance of that part of town center. Someone speaking last night pointed out that if a separate lot is sold, whatever goes on that lot just has to meet its own co-re requirements. And whereas if we own it, it is the intention of, has been the intention of all the committees, that whatever gets built there fits with what's already there. And our buildings that we presently have at town center and those that we might build or additions we might build fit nicely with the appearance of town center and the next door property of the church. And not so nice with what's on the west side of the town parcel.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah, I'll echo that statement, the, what was said, just from the, I speak as a town person on the finance side and saying, yeah, go for it. Like, you know, it's a good time to be out, we're going to be bonding things and needing, you've got the finances to do it and the position to do it, so I'm a favor from that standpoint. Get a little bit on the church side. The church wasn't looking for, to sell anything, obviously, but when you guys came and approached them, you got the church thinking, what should they do with the parsonage? You know, there's things going on in clergy today that young, young divinity students that come out are trained to not live in parsonages, but because they need to build equity and things like that, so people don't even want to live in a parsonage anymore. So the church really, when this came up, that's sort of why they came forward with what they did. I think they like being the neighbor, you know, John's comment about the whole town center, if either the church owned it and the town are neighbors with each other, it sort of preserves that, that town frontage and town center approach. So not that they would sell, but you guys would be giving them something they could do and it becomes an opportunity for them to do. It's not any plans to do that, but it could, so. I think the church would like to, to see how all that developed and be, you know, you have the town, you have the church, and you have the school. It makes a nice, it makes a nice front main street for the town.
I actually like the proposal that came out last week that leaves the church with a two-acre lot. My concern, though, is that there's not enough parking, there's not enough room for parking. I've always been concerned that trying to do the library and the Town Hall at that site is just too much. It's, it doesn't, any of the proposals we've seen doesn't allow enough room for expansion of those facilities in 30 years. It was a kind of acute idea that the town had in the 60s to create the town center and we have seriously outgrown that. The same thing will happen if we try to crown the Town Hall and expand the library. The library won't have room to expand in 30 years if, if we don't have enough space for all the parking and all the facilities that we can't even imagine today that will be necessary in 30 or 50 years. I think it makes a whole lot of sense. I appreciate Tom Johnson Field's email today. I think it makes all the sense in the world to build a separate building over here for Town Hall and leave the existing town center site exclusive for historical and library. And that's, you know, those, there's great synergy that happens between those. There could be really great synergy between Town Hall and public safety here. So although I, you know, I support these ideas, I also feel really important that with the voters an option to move forward with a really simple, straightforward plan with the Town Hall over here that's not encumbered by also having a purchased property.
I have a second question then. The issue for my end, so I'll put on the table, has always been, what do you do with the parsonage? I have concerns that there might be some heritage issues that the Heritage Commission will want to keep it or restore it. And I want to put that to rest, so that will help me in this point.
The Heritage Commission meets on Thursday night coming up and that is on the agenda to see exactly what the feelings are. Okay?
Thank you. One other thought. I think that the purchase of the land and the location of the buildings to be built are really two separate issues. When the option to purchase the 5.4 acres came forward, at first, I was just thinking about the need, needs. But when you look at the history of 170 years, when you look at the history of 1950, the fire station we have was built on, man donated by the church. Same thing happened with the library. When you say that you don't know what would be needed in the future, to me, those are all arguing in favor of purchasing as much as you can. That's contiguous with the existing parcel. And I then think it's a separate question as to where the buildings go.
Yeah.
Well, great. Well said.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else have any questions at the moment?
Initially, the charge for the committee to bring education to the public, now you've got a more confused direction if you're not sure yet if you're going to have land to, to build on or if you're going to.
Well, I think, one of the things is in terms of educating them, the condition of the buildings, that's a given anyways. We have, we know what that is. But in terms of what the proposal is, it's addressing the needs at the library, addressing renovating of the Town Hall, and proposing building a new Town Hall. In terms of numbers, at least from the facilities committee, building at the town center or in Stevens Field, they're about the same. So there is no real, and this particular thing is just educating them to see if they want to go forward and one, get drawings done and things like that. That doesn't necessarily change too, too much. The location changes, of course, but the costs are about the same. So in terms of when we're educating them about the plan, we can at least say to them, you know, it fixes, it adds space to the library, it renovates the current library, renovates the existing Town Hall, moves the freight depot over, makes it a contiguous thing with the tool shed, tool shed with the tram room, and builds a new Town Hall. That's the part that's kind of iffy where that would be.
Yeah.
And I concur with all these other people on the committee that this is a one-time opportunity in my eyes. When the church, church is in having some financial issues, I won't go into them, but I think this helps them out at the same time.
Sure.
And it helps us out. Next year, they might have a wealthy person that comes in and says, oh, here's a million dollars, you're all set. I think the church would say, hm, I don't know if I'd sell now. So I think this is the time to do that. So that's, that's my thought.
Mr. Park?
Yeah, I, I think there are two separate issues here. One, one is whether the voters should, whether a warrant article should be developed to, to purchase church land. That's a separate issue. And trying to visualize where this wants to go on the part of some, the recommendation from the most recent facilities committee was 2D, which puts all the buildings on that one parcel. So to bring five into the mix, that was a fallback. So you're being charged with developing a vision and distributing information and every time five gets advanced, it muddies the waters considerably. In a sense that from a voter's point, actually, from your point of view, how are you going to speak to two proposals? So taking one thing at a time, the land would be one warrant article and some sort of appropriation for design would probably be the second warrant article. And the option you should be advocating for on the recommendation of facilities committee is 2D. And this talk of five should disappear.
Well, five was on the table as of before last night's board meeting because we had rejected the offer from the church. And the whole proposal of the facilities committee was it's 2D until the church, we can't get any church land because 2D will not work without the church land. So as of last night, it's, we're back in that particular mode again. And from the conversation that Mr. Jeans just had with me or with us, that it sounds like the church is amenable to moving forward. I sent them an email last night asking if they'd like to proceed. I have not heard back officially, but it sounds like the conversation Mr. Jeans had, they're, they're willing to move forward with it.
Well, however, what I just heard from Mr. Cedarholm was quite different. And what I heard from Mr. Tappin as a follow-up. Uh, and what I heard from Mr. Tappin as a follow-up was quite different. Uh, in, in suggesting that, that the, uh, there are two separate issues here. One is the purchase of the property and where the town hall goes, where the buildings go is a whole separate matter. No, it's not a separate matter. Uh, the directive is two D. Everything's going to go together and the town will vote up or down on the church property and on an appropriation for design for that property. And then if it doesn't cut muster, then you gotta wait a cycle and figure out what went wrong. And that'll make your job easier because then you're advocating for one thing.
But I think we also have to tell the voters that the backup plan, because we could put a warrant article on for bringing the church property, the voters could reject it. So I think they need to be aware that that is the backup, Stevens Field is the backup.
However, it can't be your driver and it shouldn't be your driver.
It can be.
I think you need to let the voter know that though.
But I'm just saying that, that you are, got the calendar up against, against you and um, it shouldn't be your driver. So the consensus of this committee is to move forward, uh, and, and negotiate with the church, which it appears to be, then that's one thing.
Yep.
Uh, but you need to be careful in terms of placement of the buildings because basically right now, you're, you should be advocating for two D and, and all the buildings would be together in that one site.
That is the plan that is supported by the selectmen at this particular time. Is that correct?
Well, that's not what I think I heard in the last few minutes.
Well, that's the position of the selectmen. Each member on the board can have their own opinions and I think that's what you're hearing because the board, this particular group hasn't voted on that yet.
I, I, I think, just one more thing. I think it makes a huge difference. Okay, so if you put uh, uh, the purchase of the church property out there with option five, and option five, I'm just saying, okay? You know, because option five would be put the, put the town hall on Stevens Field. Uh, and the church property fails and five isn't up, then we still, we have a problem. Because even Mr. Cedarholm acknowledged that we have, don't have adequate parking and space.
Yep.
To, to honor the services in the town center. So, uh, you know, I think we need to be very careful and you don't have a lot of time to mess around because you gotta basically keep it on task and move it.
Yeah, I, uh, I'll, in my opinion, the most critical issue is trying to continue the town administration in the existing town hall. And delaying moving the administration of that building um, any period of time, I think would be a big mistake. So if the, if the big proposal, purchasing uh, church property and then doing a whole ball of wax on that, on that, um, that lot fails and five is not on the table, then, then we're adding a whole nother year to trying to figure out what to do with town hall.
The whole ball of wax is on the table no matter where town hall goes. Um, at meeting after meeting, when the public came to the previous committee's presentations, uh, they said they did not want a piecemeal presentation. They wanted to see all of the costs for all of the buildings. Um, it didn't mean that they were necessarily per, done all at once with a single bond, although at the public presentation, that was the um, overwhelming support for that. Um, I think it was close to unanimous. But they did not want to have um, a proposal for doing one building.
And who were you talking about, they?
The people that attended the previous uh, facilities committee meetings. Um, they did not want to be presented with um, just a cost for a, one building. To then find out next year or two years down the road, oh, and now we need X amount of money for fixing up the old town hall and then later on we need X amount of money for adding to the library. Uh, they wanted to see the whole thing. And it wasn't just the cost of constructing all the buildings. They wanted to see the cost of what does it do to um, operating those buildings? What does it do to uh, the personnel that you need? If you have more buildings, do you need um, another person or part-time to maintain them? They wanted to see the whole thing. Um, so we need to be presenting to the voters the whole plan, whatever that plan is. Um, we, I think that the town would be in serious trouble if it tried to get away with presenting a piece of it. Just one building as, here's something we can do, it's only going to cost X. Because people know they're going to be asking, so what about the rest of it?
Well, so we're, we're talking about multiple warrant articles, I understand. A warrant article to purchase a piece of property. Um, and then are we also talking about a warrant article to do a, uh, to further our potential plan?
Money for design?
Right. And so are we um, are we then putting all our eggs in this, in this one basket of purchasing the church property and then furthering a plan that is focused on, on the existing town, uh, town center? Or are we talking about two studies? Um, or two architectural plans, one for five and then one for the town hall?
Just, just one. Just one.
With all the work that's been done by the committees, I mean, we've been doing this for ten years, as you know, because you've been on many of them. And they finally came to a decision that it would be all in one place. And that, I think, is what we are charged with presenting, is the findings from that committee to put it in one place. Um, and the only reason that five was, or putting it over here was mentioned, is if it all fell apart and it couldn't happen. And if we do get the church land, it looks like it can and will be able to happen. Uh, I would hate to um, just trash, so you'd say, what they came up with after ten years of study. They came up with a plan and second guessing them now if, if, if it could happen, I think is a mistake. Uh, basically, the town hall building um, that is, could be planned, could go on either site. So if the whole thing fell apart, we're still looking at the same building that could go on Stevens Field. So it's not a re-study of what it would be. But I think we, as a committee, are charged to go forward with what we were presented with.
In the, in the architect's um, original proposal, uh, between two D and five, the town halls were two different designs. Uh, but that was because they were much larger than what's being proposed now. Um, and on Stevens Field, the architect was trying to preserve the entire playing field. Um, and so he was trying to fit a town hall on the closest piece of it with, and still keep the whole playing area. Um, and so that's why they were two different designs. Um, but uh, the, the design, um, and it's, it is thanks to Randy Stevens, um, that I think kind of opened their eyes at a smaller and simpler design with a much simpler footprint um, and a five thousand square foot rectangular, single rectangle footprint, um, that fits either place. And that's what was uh, laid out to go out in multiple, could go in multiple places in Stevens Field, that same footprint fits at town center. So if pursuing the two D, um, and the design of those buildings, if somehow down the road, um, when you were partway into it, I don't know what might happen between the, the church reneging on sale, um, the building itself, the design of the building fits over here, just as it fits at town center.
Can we get back, we have our, our experts in the back on the town, so can we get your feedback in terms of the proposals we have, in terms of getting information out? Any idea in terms, or what's your opinion in terms of some of these good ideas, bad ideas? Do you have any other ideas? Um, I also, I think the committee would like to take you up on your, I think you offered at the training session to kind of speak to people when you're out and about doing whatever you do, uh, speaking to different townspeople about the particular condition of the buildings and also in terms of the proposal, so.
Yeah, well, that's, I, I, for, for me as a department head, it might be a little hard for me to convince somebody that I didn't believe in the proposal myself.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I just think you're trying to take, jump up six flight, six, six stairs at once and you're going to fall back and have nothing when you could take one step at a time. I agree that you need a whole complete plan for all the buildings, but when I look at the history of what's, what Ry's doing, five years they've tried to get something. Uh, Barrington, Town Hall's tried to get something for how many years? Four, five, six years? People don't, townspeople don't really go for buildings for some reason. They'll go for a fire truck, they'll go for a highway truck. It's a tough, a town building's a tough sell. I, I just, you know, to put all this effort in and we don't, we know what the components of the proposal want, but we don't know what the voters want. And that's, that's our real issue. What, what is the voter going to do when he comes and casts his vote? Three and a half million? I don't know. You can call me a pessimist if you want, but I just kind of look at history, what's happened in this town, what's happened in other towns.
So they're, it, they're not going to be asked for three point four million dollars. They're going to be asked for the purchase of the property of the church, whatever that happens to be.
Yeah, I can support that.
Uh, and also in terms of doing architectural drawings, a model and those kind of things so that when we come back for the town meeting or deliver the session in two thousand nineteen, that's what will be presented in terms of the three point, whatever it happens to be. I think three point four is a little bit more than...
So, so it'll be at least two years before anything happens to the town hall.
Yeah, please.
You're right.
And I think we have a, a duty to at least get something in front of the voters so that they can react to it.
Right.
Because I agree with you.
That's, that's the only way you're going to find out, is put something in front of them. It's just what you put in front of them, I don't know.
So I guess, let me go back to your statement in terms of you, you don't support it. So you support the church property, do you support the um, the design stuff? I don't, maybe I'm calling you out here, but...
Yeah, really.
But is that something that you can speak to people about though? Is that something you're comfortable?
I can, I can speak to them about the need of the buildings.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
That's what we're looking for, is getting the information. There are still so many people in town that have no idea what the condition of the town hall is.
And it's really, if you're trying to sell it, people really know, need to know why and you can't sugarcoat anything. It has to be complete facts. That's what I found with the history of town. When people try to, you can go back to Little River Park, to the turf field, all kinds of things. If, if you try to sugarcoat it, people see right through it. It has to be a strictly fact.
We're trying to have you help us figure out how we get this basic information to people. And one of the, one of the ways is word of mouth. And if, if people are willing to talk to people about it, then that's a big step forward.
Well, you can sort of get a feeling on what people will support, you know?
Right.
When you're talking to them, say, well, you know, would you support three and a half million or would you, you know, that totally outweighed?
Well, we talk, uh, we're, we're the town center vision committee, I think we're the town center education committee. Um, this vision is kind of getting in the way.
Blurry.
Um, blurry, uh, blurry is good. Because it's not up to us to sell the proposal, it's up to us to educate about the proposal. And we're looking for help in how to do that.
When I said that the people that came to the meeting want to know the whole cost, um, that doesn't necessarily mean that the funding plan is to present the voters the option of a bond which will pay for doing everything in one step. Um, but they want to know what's coming. They don't want to be presented with um, just the cost for one building and no discussion of what is, might cost for everything else that needs to be done. Um, so it's, I think it is a separate issue as to whether or not the, the funding request is for the whole thing or whether the funding request is for the first step. Um, the recommendation of the previous committee was that you go for the whole thing and the argument was that doing it in steps costs more. But that's, that's a separate...
To give you an idea, we have forty-four hundred, maybe how many do we have, forty-four hundred? How many people vote in, not that show up, that vote, is it three thousand or whatever? How many ever it is, there's one off that list. Two weeks ago, this lady emailed me and was very irritated. She says, what's this town center vision? What are you trying to do? And she says, I saw it on the minutes, on the agenda, and I have no clue what you, what, what you're trying to do. So I said it's in terms of um, saying that, um, getting people educated on the condition of the buildings and the proposal. She says, well, what's the matter with the buildings? She said, they're perfectly fine to me. So she and I had a conversation about it and I shared some pictures with her. She says, now it all makes sense what you're doing. And I think that's what your typical voter out there is going to be, they have no clue. Either they come into the town hall or whatever and they have no clue in terms of what the issue is in there, in terms of the library, people that go to the library probably know it, but the average voter doesn't know, so we need to educate them. So I guess we're looking, I'm looking to see if there's anything we can do uh, to assist that and if you have any other ideas. Toby?
Well, I hear a lot of it over at the transfer station, why are we building this, why are we building that? And they don't, you're right about that, they don't know what is going on in the town hall right now existing. So in times that I explain to them that there's only like one big rock probably holding the whole thing right up in the middle of it, so what do you do? That, trying to pretty much explains everything. And they say, okay, at least we know, but why we gotta pay so much for it? I said, well, that's something you gotta bring up to the meeting when you do show up. So, so a lot of the residents do, they ask, why are we building? Where are we building? How are we doing building? Who's building what? They, the building's out there, it's a matter of when, where and what, taking that step. So the questions are out there.
Well, thank you for talking about it.
So would it make it easier for you? It sounds to me like it would make it easier for you if we had prepared some kind of a, a handout, uh, in a letter of legal size, maybe three-fold, um, that has some pictures and explains what the problems are, what's wrong with the floor in town hall, et cetera.
Yeah, there's a lot of whys, a lot of whys, why? You know, we gotta answer those in order for them to have a understanding.
Like all the code violations that you have in the building, with a whole list of them, which you have quite a few that have just been ignored for many years, you know, as far as what's going on. So those, I think, will come home, you know, that yes, it's been ignored and ten years worth of trying to do stuff, it's just gotten worse.
So what do other people think about new handout? Is that something that you could give people or...
Yeah, we can pin that out, but I think having people actually stationed at the transfer station with information over however many multiple days is probably the best way to get people.
And you're going to have to have people doing that that believe in your plan.
Right. And, and you know this, sending people something in the mail, they just don't read it. They just don't look at it. They just don't look at it.
The only way they look at it is if it's directly to them, addressed to them, open an envelope and have a letter, and that's expensive.
Even then, I'm not sure if they read it. As soon as they discovered it wasn't really about them, in other words, I mean, it is about them, but it's not, hey, your taxes there, so your assessment that, or, I think they're just gonna go, and they're not gonna look at it.
Go ahead.
I think we need multiple ways. Having a written thing, having people at the transfer station, having stuff in the library, having stuff at the Town Hall here. The more ways, the better. Just, we don't need to do one way that's the most expensive way.
And if you have small panels of information, and you go to different places, sounds real good, right?
Some people still do read.
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna say Foster's, an article in Foster's letters to the editor.
Yes, multiple.
Even if you're just reproducing what's in a handout, the text that's in there, highlight the things.
I have a question. Why, why do we need to spend the money now on architecture drawings and, and a model when we have a lot of talented people in town that could do a rough drawing for us? I mean, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in the library process that went nowhere. And it looks to me like that's the same way we're heading now.
It's possible. What, that desire comes from what the typical voter would need next year to determine if they wanna support it or not.
I think it's gonna boil down just to money.
Well, I think, at least what we heard, in terms of, right, if we went with that right now, people don't have enough information in terms of, well, what's a building gonna look like?
I think you could get away with a lot cheaper, like somebody like Robin Wonderlife, I'm sure he would do something. A lot, I mean, models are not cheap, engineered drawings are not cheap.
The select board haven't, haven't even discussed that particular part. We have a proposal from AG Architects to do that particular work, so we have a general idea. But we could definitely, I, I'm not sure if we've got enough time to find out what that number is. Maybe we can do some rough stuff, but that's something the board hasn't talked about yet, in terms of that particular proposal.
And is it definite that the new building is going at the Town Hall complex and not Stevens Field?
I, it's my understanding that the board supported the proposal from the Facilities Committee with some tweaks. And the proposal from the Facilities Committee was two D, which is the buildings at Town Center. And if we do not get the church property, it goes to Stevens Field. That's my understanding.
Is it, is it, do you think that you're gonna present it that way in the Warren Article?
In terms of for the drawings or the?
For the drawing.
Buildings? Uh, we haven't talked about that. I can, I could give you my opinion, but the board has, you know, hasn't, hasn't discussed that particular part.
Well, I didn't know whether this committee had discussed that or not.
Mr. Paul? Is that just somebody? Is Toby? I hear all sorts, sorry.
The, the subtext of what I'm hearing from employees is that they've made up their minds. And, and I can sense that the importance of, of the Town Hall needing to be addressed. But the original purpose of all these committees was the Town Center. And the Town Hall became the driver because the Town Hall was the most urgent need. So I would hate to see us lose sight of that and, and, and simply say that in my experience, the town's never gonna pay for this. And I guess if you don't believe that, then, then you don't believe that, and I'm not sure how you can advocate for Plan Two D and give the Town Center a fair chance. Because if, if we go the route of, of the church property on the warrant and design drawings for Two D, and we fail, then we need to kinda just recast ourselves and try to figure out where to go. But if we try to bypass that and put Five on there, we kinda know what's gonna happen here. Okay? People are gonna go to Five, and, you know, I sat at a, I think a select board meeting, one of these meetings, I've been to a lot of meetings recently, where somebody ordered up an ADA compliance cost analysis. And I looked at that, and I said, okay, well, that's a fair thing to do. But then I, I said, well, that's a handy thing to do too. Because basically, if you wanna sell off and write off any possibility of developing the historic complex at the Town Center with the Oyster River Middle School project on the horizon, we got this little window to sneak in something for Lee. Okay? Something for Lee, not just for our Town Hall employees, something for Lee, something for our Town Center. And, and I think it's time for us to give that a fair chance. And, and to own up to the fact that maybe it's time for some of us to stand up and say, you know, we can afford to do this, and it's time that we do it. And we're gonna get a new Town Hall out of it, and we're gonna get a nice, comfortable place for employees and the members of the public, but we're gonna get a lot more. So it would be heartening after ten years of work, and, and a lot of criticism about what the Town Center could be, to, to bring, bring this discussion back to the Town Center, and not just the, the Town Hall. Even though that will be the driver in the equation, that's not the be all and end all of everything.
Well, write those words down, Paul, and you can say in the delivery session, 'cause I think that would be interesting.
Oh, that might do more harm than good.
Well, you can tell. Any other comments from the department heads?
Yeah, I have a comment. I can be bought. I will, tell me what you want my vision to be, and I will do it, if I need to.
God, you're easy.
I'm easy. I'm not gonna stand up and say, yeah, I'd really want the Town Hall over here, but I want to do, you know, so your job is to pitch what the selectmen want to push for this process that we're in right now, where we are in the process, which is purchase the land, position the project for here, so the town can vote on that and say yea or nay, then I'll, you know, I'm in, I'll, I'll do my best. You know, I have my own opinion about, and I think we have talked about it, about the facilities of the town. You've got three engineers sitting on this committee, so our apologies. But, you know, we have a lot of concerns about the structural integrity of some of the buildings on the town, and so we support, clearly support, you know, better buildings, green, greens, you know, all those sort of good things. And I'm okay wherever we would decide to put a new Town Hall, because we're gonna be putting in something that's modern, safe, more green. You know, all those, all these sort of things for the next, you know, thirty to fifty to seventy-five years for that building, so. But I'm kinda listening to, to everybody here, and just sort of... I, I like the idea of getting the land for the, for the future. The works to have the, the Town Center, and all the buildings be there, that would be great, but we do, I agree, the public's gonna kinda tell us one way or the other what they, what they wanna do, and, and you just never know. But our job is to set it up for them, so they can, they have a good decision to make, right? If, if they don't wanna do the land, then that makes it, makes it easy. But we still have to pitch the fact that we do need some new buildings here. These aren't safe, I mean, let alone the fact that, and I thought, I don't know if everyone has seen what the, the police chief wrote, about, you know, just his opinion about just Town Hall currently, first paragraph, he just talks about how terrible that's, the, the, the Town Hall has to operate today. I don't know how anybody would feel about where they work to, to walk in and like, deal with, have a confidential conversation with your supervisor in the open. Or the fact that we have the welfare agent in the open, and just some thing, it's just, it's just not good. So, you know, we have some serious things we have to do there, so, anyway, I'll shut up. I just wanna let everybody know, I'm all in. Tell me what this, tell me what to do.
Slipping under the table, team.
I'll show up at the, at the transfer station with a smile on my face and pitch the project, so.
I, I agree, I, certainly the Town Hall, uh, yes, people shouldn't be working in there. Not, not the way it is now. I agree wholeheartedly. The, the point I'm making, though, is that between the committee and the selectmen, I think we have been told what we're educating and what we're proposing. And again, we're not here to sell it, we're here to educate about it. And I see that as, I see that as two different things.
Honestly, 'cause I've gone to presentations at various conferences about how you get the voters to buy into a building, and you have to sell it. I don't understand how this committee can do their job without selling the project, because what are you going to do if after you educate the person standing in front of you, they say, well, what's your opinion? What do you think? You've been studying this, you've been on these committees. Are you, are you not gonna say what you think?
That, that is when they, they can ask an opinion. And if they're looking for an, an individual opinion, yes, I think you can tell them what you think. But as far as promoting and putting out information in written form or, or whatever, I think that should be educational.
I will tell them my opinion, if they ask, yeah.
If they ask me, I'll tell them.
I think that one of the most important things is to, just to educate people in terms of the condition of the buildings. 'Cause if your house was in the condition of the Town Hall, wouldn't you do something about it? I would. The thing that we're gonna get pushed back from is the people that can't afford that particular thing. And I know there's people in town that can't do that, so. But I think we need to do something to get it onto the ballot, so we can get their reaction. Because right up to this point, the only thing we've really put on is the brick of property in the Library Community Center. And they haven't seen anything else. So I think we need to get something in front of them and let them react. And I agree with Randy, maybe we'll get chopped down, maybe they'll say, heck no, but then come back next year and try it again, maybe tweak it a little bit differently, I don't know. But I think, either way, I think the town should be buying the church property, if anything, just to lock that in, so we have options going forward, so.
Thinking of ways to get information to the public, given all the talent in this town, is there someone who could create a video of all the failings, you know, that, I mean?
That was one of the things, one of our members who's not here tonight, he is going to contact the high school. They have a media department. Paul used to be the, be the guy, the go-to guy, and to see if they would be interested to do that.
I think that would be, could be very useful, both to have on the website and to have presented at Town Meeting, and maybe even to circulate.
Can it go on Comcast? Do we still have?
Yeah. Yeah, well, we have Comcast, but we also have YouTube. If you put it on YouTube, we could get.
You could, it's probably more than YouTube.
So the, we certainly have structural issues with the buildings, but particularly in Town Hall, there's a real serious environmental issue, which, which is truly a health and safety issue. And as you said, you know, if you had to live in that building, if that was your only choice, you would move out of that building. And, and if we're gonna put all of our eggs in the, in the basket of constructing a complete Town Hall and everything in, on that same site, we need to come up with a contingency plan for the administration. They can't, you know, it'll be, so architectural plan, if it all happens, and we purchase the, the land in, in 2018, so we'll be, 2018 will spent developing a plan. We bring a Warren Article 2019, if that passes, we construct it in 2019. And then maybe by the beginning of 2020, Julie and her staff have a place to work. That's almost three years from now.
Right.
So, so we can't, you know, at best, it's, you know, two plus years.
If that would fail, would, then we have to come back the next year to go to, or would the default be to do?
I don't know. But what I'm suggesting is, there needs to be a contingency plan to get those people out of Town Hall. And, you know, we've got, there is space here. And we need to set up an interim Town Administration Hall.
Tents. She went, she utilized tents.
Yurts. A yurt.
A yurt?
A yurt. A yurt, a yurt in Stevens Field.
Wiring goes a crazy way.
But I also, I, I agree with Randy. You know, what we're, what we're bringing forward, you know, whether you don't wanna talk about what we're gonna do there for purchasing the town, the land from the town, and the idea is to build the whole thing there, we're talking about a four million dollar project, 'cause it, 'cause at best, we're constructing it in 2019. Voters aren't gonna go for that. This is not gonna happen. And I, I don't, I am not intentionally being negative, I'm a realist.
So, so what we would then be left with is, we can build a new Town Hall on Stevens Field, and that's it. We can't renovate the old Town Hall or make use of it.
Whatever gets, whatever, wherever it goes, the important thing is that the Town Administration vacates that building. It's a horrible work atmosphere.
I understand that. What I'm asking, what I'm asking is, if the whole project can't be sold, what you're saying is that we should do a, pay for a new Town Hall, and the rest is gone, I mean, we're just...
We'll do it piece by piece.
Piece by piece.
That has always been a plan, that it can be, even if, even if the Town Hall is placed, that's, whether the Town Hall is at Stevens Field or the Town Hall is at Town Center, you can still pay for it either piece by piece or all at once. Just because the Town Hall is at Town Center doesn't mean that you have to ask for a three million dollar bond.
But you're adding another layer, having, having to buy land. Do you have to pay less?
Correct, so the, the, but the argument for the land, I think, goes beyond just Town Hall.
I agree with you on that, but the average person most likely won't, so if you...
I think that that is something that this committee has to explain why the argument for the land goes beyond just the Town Hall. We had, previously this town tried to build, or looked at the voters, to build a new library on another parcel. That started out at, I believe it was three point eight five million dollars, was the first number I saw. And it then went down, but it did not pass.
And that was a hundred thousand dollars, it didn't pass.
And if there was no land purchased at Town Center, then I cannot see any future for a library, the library at Town Center. And so we will then be stuck with either the library that we have, or we will be trying to fund another, I don't know, whatever you come up with, three million or two million dollar library someplace else. The purchasing land at Town Center is, I think, is necessary for any of those buildings there to have a future.
So, so it seems like what you just said is that the library can't expand without additional land.
Correct.
And so what we're doing then is encumbering and holding back the solution for Town Hall. And this is my opinion, and other people will have the same opinion, so it's, it's not helpful when you shake your head while trying to talk. So if we're encumbering... So if we're encumbering the solution for town hall with, uh, of, all of the things that need to happen to, in order to grow the library, um, that is a problem that, that we're just never going to be able to overcome, in my opinion. The average person, as Karen just said, then I gotta go for it.
So explain the difference in schedule. Are you trying to push the select board to put a warrant article on this year's agenda for a bond to build the town hall?
I, I am advocating for giving the, the voters choices. And we're not giving them a choice if we're saying, purchase the land and do this big thing on, on the current town center site.
What would their choices be? What would the warrant articles be?
Well, warrant article, the second warrant article would be, um, choice number five, but.
Which is?
And I found this out for the first time tonight, that sure that five is completely off the table, so. Um, I'm, you know, I'm just, I'm in the camp of town staff.
First, sorry, but it wasn't a report that five was off the table.
Well, this, it sounds like the selectmen voted to take five off the table.
The, the concern is building, getting a new town hall, but the only way I see that you can come up with a schedule that's faster is if this year there is a warrant article for a bond to build the town hall.
That would do it. But we don't have, we don't have the, the plan necessary to do that, so. So it's just, the schedule has happened that if, if that's, um, determined to be one of the choices, it needs to be advancing our architectural plan here or an architectural, and an architectural plan and give the, give the voters the choice. But it doesn't sound like that's on, that's on the table. We're going to go so forward with, um, warrant article to, if, if we can come up with something with the church in the next couple of weeks.
So.
Just wasting my breath.
No, you're, you're trying to explain to me why a process that takes two years is any different in time than another process that takes two years.
However, well, at best, we're looking at two years with, um, if, if this is the plan. But this plan, as, as large as it is, will more likely take four or five years to get through.
Um, the first step of that plan.
Um, can we?
Yeah, is build the town hall. It's no different.
Can you, two of you back off for just a minute. Does anybody else have anything that'd like to say?
I just have, um, just a clarification about what this committee is going to do about educating. We talked about, really, it's not a vision committee, it's an education. We want to educate people on the, the needs of the town buildings. Is there also going to be a component as to possible solutions for those? Or are you simply going to say, these are the needs and we're going to have a warrant article to get architectural plans to solve these?
The, the proposal for the facilities committee, borrowing some tweaks by the select board, is for doing option two D with a backup of five if we can't get the church property. It sounds like we can get the church property, so. It's not necessarily off the table, Dave, in my opinion, but it's not on there yet either. It's in the wings, if you will. So, so it's a process of educating, but also telling them about the proposal that the select board is going to put forward. And right at the moment, the select board is putting forward option two D. Everything's at the town center. We buy the church property. So that's what we're going to be educating them, promoting, I don't necessarily like that word, but that's what we're going to be talking to them about. The other thing I just, to mention, one of the things that John's doing for us, and I'd love each of you to create your devil's advocate question. Because he's compiling a list of questions that people can ask, have asked, and with answers to those. One of those things, uh, was very, uh, that was very helpful when we did this building. The chiefs at the time, we went through, the whole committee went through all these devil advocate things and we had answers to everybody's questions, and I don't think we had a question that we did not answer. Um, so if anybody has any questions that you can come up with, one of them that I just got asked the other day, it says, well, if the builders are so bad, why didn't you do anything so far? Which is a good question. Um, so it's things like that. So if you have any of those, let us know what those are um, so we can get answers to those particular questions. Because everybody's going to have some kind of question, because it's a lot of money, so, um, and it's an important thing, so. Maybe.
Well, I, I do think that a question, you know, those kinds of questions, like if we voted down, what, what is going to happen? Are you going to have to do repairs to the buildings, you know? Is this year, is there slated things that will be done? I think those are really important questions. So they know what the ramifications if they vote down something moving forward. So if this doesn't happen, something's going to have to happen in town hall to help hold it together.
There's certain, there's certain things in the CIP that if we go ahead with this, we will not do because you don't need to put a furnace in an old building that, you know, you're going to renovate and put a new furnace in anyways. Um, there's also in terms of, we've been holding off. Karen, unfortunately, has all the builders come in and they, I think they periodically mentioned, well, your roof looks really bad. So we've been holding off on that because in the print, in the plan, that building goes away. So it's things like that. And also the other thing that we just, um, asked the town minister or she brought to us, doing a, um, um, what is that called?
Give them a little study.
The air study. Because she's, they have people coming in there that I guess are susceptible to air issues and they, they think it's awful.
I don't think you have to be susce-, I think you need, I don't want to sound.
Yes.
But it is affecting us.
Yeah.
It is, it has gotten worse in the six years that I've been there. Um, and there's definitely an air quality issue. And again, yeah, it does make sense because I saw there was just none of a mole in the report.
Yeah, if you look at those pictures.
But, but back to the point of we need a backup plan, that's why I say perhaps the warrant article for the design can be crafted to make it obvious that there's a backup plan. So if the purchase of the land fails, you can still go forward with, keep calling it Plan Five, whatever you may call it.
Option Five.
Option Five. Because otherwise, if you, if you make that warrant article tied specifically to only doing things at town hall, then you're correct, you've lost a year. And, I mean, I just think it makes sense to at least leave that option open.
One of the things that Randy's done, he, um, I don't know, you contacted Epsom, right?
Right.
Because they just went up to bid for forty-five hundred?
Forty-five hundred.
Um, square foot town hall, and they got bids back, uh, eight hundred and forty-three thousand is the low bid, the high one is.
Yeah, somewhere in the eight forty.
The high one was million something, million two.
Almost one six.
So it was, it was like almost twice as much. So you don't know what you're getting for the low bidder, but even the high bidder was like twice as much, so.
Yeah, although that was a two-spiratory building with an O B.
Two-spiratory, yeah. But it gives you an idea in terms of what the costs are out there for those size buildings.
They also get rejected their first proposal a couple of years ago.
I'm sorry. Um, Paul, did you have a question or?
Just another comment, and, uh, you know, uh, the building, the building, quote unquote, the building, which is said repeatedly, is not the town center. It is the building. I, I taught in a seven hundred square foot substandard classroom for twenty-five years, okay? When, when I, uh, when they renovated Oyster River High School, they had to do asbestos abatement in the building, okay? Uh, while they were renovating, I taught in a classroom that was adjacent to Dyna Way. Okay, so, you know, I understand, I mean, I, I understand hardship and substandard air quality and, and environmental hazards, okay? I've been there. Uh, I just looked at the engineer's report that was circulated around here earlier tonight. The structural engineer who looked at town hall, he said, said the floor is sound. Okay, so, um, so it's not gone anywhere. The issue is, is, uh, where, where we join the sill plate and, and that's work that needs to be done. I'm not going to question air quality, I think it's really bad. I'm not going to question the lack of privacy, I think that's really bad. I want to see a new town hall, but more than that, I want to see a vibrant town center. And I'm surprised that some people in this room who spoke repeatedly years ago about the vibrancy and the need for town center, who have seemed to have forgotten about it now. And, uh, uh, I think that's the number one. And after all these years, if you can look the historical society people in the eye and the heritage commission people in the eye and the library people in the eye and say, we're going to do the warrant articles in this order and if, if the land fails, then maybe we do five, and the five passes, then we got the town hall done. And, uh, good luck with the rest of you because we're going to do it piecemeal, quote unquote, piecemeal, which is exactly what it will be. Okay? We are either all in this together and it's time for that to happen, or we're not. And if it's two D, that's the proposal, and you can't get behind it, then your, your superiors know that you can't do that.
I'm sorry, oh, yeah, I should have said. I just.
I think we need to recognize that there are different constituencies here. Um, and we all have different viewpoints and different experiences of the town and its facilities. Um, and the employees at town hall have a very specific, everyday experience of those facilities. And that's, their concern with it is completely understandable, rational, and needs to be listened to. Other people are looking at a, I think, looking at a long-term, um, what would, do they think would be better for the town, very long-term. Um, I think that the, we owe it to the town employees to listen to them, to make sure that we, um, are, are doing the best that we can to provide the facilities that they need. But at the same time, we have to look at the long-term, what's best long-term for the town. And I think we need to recognize that in the two D plan, um, that is a much more, um, uncomfortable, um, plan for town employees. Um, it means much more disruption. Um, it means that we are asking town, telling town employees that, uh, two hundred and fifty feet from their office, we're going to have a major construction project. When they get to move into that, we'll have another one, major renovation project, two hundred and fifty feet from their office. When that's done, there's going to be a major construction project and renovation project, perhaps as little as a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet from their office. Um, or there's the option five where nothing happens, nothing changes, and then one day there's a new office building. And they move into that. Um, and that is, which choice would you want? Um, and, but that's a construction season. Um, and.
But I don't think that that, I don't think that that construction is why the department heads unanimously wanted the building at Stevens Field. I don't think we ever gave that a thought. I know I never did till right now.
Well, I'm basing that on having been told that, that question asked of me.
I'm just saying my, I never thought about it till right now. I know in our meeting that we had a few weeks ago and talked about it, and the other meeting that we had, we all thought that Stevens Field was the best option. For all different reasons.
And the reasons are?
Well, per, I can only, I personally, because I think it's a better location. I think it's better to build a big parking lot that we can all share. And I think that to have all the recreation facilities at Little River Park makes much more sense than the town hall. I agree, we should buy some land from the church, but I don't necessarily agree with how much. And I think that the better fit is Stevens Field personally. That's just my personal, and other department heads can speak for themselves because most of them are here.
He doesn't really know.
You've got to realize that as department heads, we talk to an awful lot of people.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that, uh, I don't know how to word this.
You could be.
Maybe I shouldn't even word it. I'm just going to say, as department heads, we talk to an awful lot of people and I think we get a pretty good feel of what, what the voters, a feel of what the voters may or may not pass. I'm just going to leave it at that.
And I can't sell something I don't believe in or support. Sorry, that's my, answering to my superior's pulse that I should, and I can't sell something I don't support.
Thank, thank, thank you.
You know, I, um, I, I think what you guys have done tonight has been a great service in that, um, you know, here we are talking about trying to educate the public. And really, what's going on tonight is, is we've, we've gotten down to this, boiling it down to, why are you doing this and why aren't you just building the new building that you need in the most logical place to put it? Um, that seems, you know, if anything, Lee is a kind of a commonplace kind of town, a common sense kind of town. And so here we, we're going to get feedback about and talk about, um, the vision and education and things like that. And we've spent the whole night arguing back and forth between Stevens Field and the town. And I, and what I hear you guys saying is, the first time we go out to hand out the little brochure, it's going to be like, oh yeah, what about Stevens Field? What's up with that? Where are we with that? And it's like, uh-oh, let me check my notes. Don't talk about Stevens Field. So that's not going to, that's not going to fly. We have to, we, we got to figure that out. I mean, you can't, you can't send us out into the public not prepared to do our job. We will crash and burn, which, which will be even more horrible for the project. If, like, yeah, I talked to a couple knuckleheads up there at the transfer station and they don't even, they don't even know what to say about the Stevens Field yet. Everybody else I talked to says, that's, that's a good project, that's a good idea. Why haven't they even thought about that? So I'm nervous about going out and doing a good job for the town and to be armed with all the right information to, to educate properly when what I'm hearing tonight is, we as a town are still struggling with the vision. Like, we got good ideas, big picture, purchase the land, good thing, put it in our back pocket, maybe we use it someday, maybe we don't, but hey, we got it, we lock it out, we, we lock it up, good thing. I can write the check tomorrow for that. But this, you know, the, the chief of police wrote a very good note and, you know, when he talks about, when, and they're good at this, police are good. When they talk about public safety and employee safety, you could really take notice. So.
Ben, could you read that? I don't know if everybody hears.
Has everyone seen it?
No.
You really want me to read?
Mm-hmm. I'll read it.
Scott, you want me? You, yeah. How's your, how's your speaking voice? It's pretty good, isn't it?
So far, so good.
All right. You need the amplifier?
No, I, I can project. Um, does everybody know that the chief of police, Tom Johnson, sent a note to Scott because he could not attend tonight, so he sent an email to the committee um, to provide some, you know, his opinion as well as just some information. So I'll read it for everybody. Bear with me. Dear committee members, I apologize for not being able to attend tonight's meeting, but I would like to voice my thoughts on the issue of the town hall, okay? As the chief of police, my concerns outside of the obvious and previously stated issues of prior reports are of safety and privacy. There's nothing to stop a disgruntled resident or any person from entering the current building and having full access to the town hall employees and personnel records. Unfortunately, unfortunately, it has become all too common for employees in the workplace to become victims of this type of violence. I don't feel that the current building can be remodeled properly to accommodate the safety of employees. I feel that it would take up too much of what little room they have now. I am also concerned that the town administrator does not have a secure. I am also concerned that the Town Administrator does not have a secure office in which to discuss personnel issues. Ms. Glover frequently confers with attorneys over matters of the town and employees, and with no fault in Ms. Glover, can be sometimes overheard in the common area. As a department head and taxpayer, I would like to stand alone- I would like to see a standalone building on Stevens Field, such as the one drawn up by Randy Stevens. This location also makes sense logistically, as many new residents come to the Police Department thinking it is the Town Hall. Also, many times, people registering vehicles have come to the Police Department to have vehicle identification numbers verified. Again, to the issue of safety, there should not be any access to the Town Hall employees or records unless it is controlled. And what I mean by "controlled" is that the person is identified first, determined to have business with the Town Hall staff, the entire interaction recorded on video. I've spoken with numerous residents who have expressed their desire to see a building on Stevens Field." There you go. "They've also expressed their frustration over how long this has been discussed and studied. While this is not being attended, if anyone has a question or clarification, feel free to contact me." So, very well-written note from H.G. by five. So, only to confuse the matter even more by that.
And? It is very well-written, and all the issues that he brings up about safety for town employees is very real. And those were discussed during various- the Facility- Previous Facilities Committee, and that would be implemented in the building. The location of the building doesn't change what would structurally be required to provide safe function for the employees. So, it really doesn't matter where the building is. That will be part of what's included. And I'm sorry, but I think it's laughable that citizens can't find the Town Hall. If you go to any- if you go to the town website, it clearly states the location for everything. And the sign on the Town Hall says "Town Hall", and the sign out here says "Fire and Police." So, again, just because the building is next door at Stevens Field doesn't mean people aren't gonna go to the police station, because it's gonna be a grander building than what's proposed. Anyway, but-
There clearly is something going on. There's some kind of current going on in the town about Stevens Field.
There is, and I-
So, I mean, it's there, it's an undercurrent, it's a- if it's the default position or whatever it might be, it's there. We can't hide it, we can't- I- I don't know, I- I, you know, I really- I'm not sure, but I mean, there is enough interest and understanding in the town as to that needing to be looked at as an option and presented, because if it's not, I believe- I believe that there will be backlash on the pro- on the- on the actual project that we're trying to promote and present for. I- I just think hiding it, or not having it presented, it is possibly a fatal flaw.
Well, I-
Once again, I-
This is- obviously, it's a topic for discussion, because that's basically what we've been rehashing today. So, one of the reasons that was given for why Stevens Field is a better location is because Stevens Field is a better location. So, I would be very interested to know different opinions. Why is it a better location? What is it about this place? And I'm not- I'm not saying that it can't be done here, but what are the things that make it a better location?
Another reason, too, is if you add the Town Hall next door and you make a bigger parking lot for voting, we'll have more parking capacity for voting. The departments we work- Room for- much more room for expansion. The departments work together. You know, the Police and Fire work with departments at the Town Hall and my office more than the Library or the Hobo Shed or the Historical Building. I mean, it's just, you know, it makes more common sense. We work together. We share a parking lot, people can go from one building to another. Yes, people go to the Library, but they don't go to the other buildings, so it's just more ease for the residents. We have- there's not much parking out here to use it as a ball field. They park on the street, and they park over here. So if you move all the recreational facilities to the recreational park, where there's a parking lot and everything else is at, keep it all together instead of spread it out. Just in my opinion, as a voter and a employee, it makes more sense to have everything at Stevens Field.
The parking at Stevens Field doesn't meet the need either.
There's more room to expand. We made parking at Stevens Field.
There's more than enough room to create parking at Stevens Field. Even- even providing-
And there's-
The adequate buffer to the line.
I think that-
How's that one?
I think that the purchase of the land can be one warrant article. I think that the request for architects' design work, if that even goes forward, whether it's architects or volunteers, or some of the town that works most cheaper, most of that work is site-independent. Some of it is site-dependent, but-
I agree.
The- the size and shape of the Town Administrator's office has nothing to do with where the building is located. And the issue of the total cost for Town Hall, either place, is essentially the same. And so, it could be possible to have- What that means is that you're not actually making the plan on where Town Hall goes. You're not making it now. It gets decided later. And the schedule for Town Hall on Stevens Field, or the schedule for Town Hall at Town Center, works out to be the same, unless you could put a warrant on the- on the agenda this year for a bond for a new Town Hall, which I don't think is gonna happen, because you can't defend what's in it.
We- I'm not sure if the- I'm gonna put the selectmen on the spot. They don't have to answer, because that's their prerogative. But what would you think about putting on a question on the ballot? I don't know if it has to be non-binary or whatever, it'd probably have to be binding, but in terms of where to put the Town Hall? Because I- I'm hearing both sides, in terms of where it should be, in terms of one place or the other. And let the voter decide where they would like to have the Town Hall. Just propose new Town Hall. Is that too complicated? What are your thoughts?
It does start to get complicated.
I think it's overly complicated. I think we have to take a leadership role somehow and make decisions forward. I'd like to speak as a citizen, not as a selectperson. I want this land anyways, no matter what. I do believe in the vision that this comes- this opportunity comes once in a while. I remember a while back, when I was a- many years ago, selecting this wall, I tried to buy the Bannister property when it burned out. And hopefully, and I was going to buy it and make it into a gazebo, then use it for something later on, for expansion, but the townspeople decided not to move in that direction. So now we have this other opportunity to purchase this piece of property. Even if we haven't built anything on it, and I hate to say that, I still want the piece of property. So as a citizen, this is for the future, somewhere down the road. And what if it ends up we build it over in Stevens Field, just for devil's advocate at this point? Nobody can't say a new library can't go, we got the Town Hall good, put their run on a piece of paper. I mean-
Right.
I mean, it was at one time, we talked about putting the library over there by the recreation field, the brick of property. I mean, there's lots of opportunities that exist here.
Well, building- building the Town Hall over in Stevens Field does not stop a Town Center project.
That's true.
It's true. Because of a library expansion slash combination, community center kind of a thing, actually, moving the Town Hall creates a much more town- Get the- get those town employees over the- out of the- out of there, and let's do the community center and library and all that- all that wonderful stuff, so.
So I'm not trying to pull the monkey wrench in, but I wanna make sure we get the property no matter what we do.
I think- I think the important thing is, for me, tonight, is that- and this is all great, by the way. I love you all. Is that it shows you, whenever you get these conversations going, it's gonna be all over the map. It's just, I mean, talking to a- a very- you know, we have employ- people in town who don't follow a lot, they're gonna be pocketbook-driven. But we have a lot of other people that have major opinions about what they want and wanna make sure that it's well-thought-out. Is there a good plan with it? Are you also spending the town's money wisely? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, there's been some great ideas come out here tonight, so.
And unfortunately, the only mechanism we really, really have to- oh, geez, Nemet has a question. But the only real mechanism we have is the warrant article. A warrant article to get what people's feelings are. Because we can always have anecdotal comments about what is best, what is worse. But until you put something on a warrant, and let them react to it, that's your misstep.
That's your job to write that.
No, that's not- that's the poor of us, poor of us job. So, I- I think that's what we gotta come up with, so we can get the feeling of the particular voter. Because right at the moment, we don't know what 4,000 people are gonna say. Or 2,000 or the 900 that show up to vote. So we need to get something on a warrant out, let them react to it. And I think this committee's job is to educate them as much as possible and do that. So, we've all been waiting for Mr. Nemet to make a comment, and set the floor.
For me, I think the biggest thing is to educate the public. I hear every other day that people do not know what kind of fire department they have in their own town. I've heard from people moving into town fairly new that they think they have 24/7 paramedic coverage fire department. Like, we're Dover or Darmen, we're not. I've heard people say that Matbury Fire Department is the lead fire department. I've also seen multiple people come down here and thought this was the Town Hall. For me, seeing the voting take place in this building, we do have emergency services in there. Those days that there's voting here, it puts a hardship on the fire department. The last thing I wanna see is us try and run out for a call and somebody get hit by a fire truck. So that makes, you know, that day's a very nervous day for me, having so many people around this building. You know, I support the staff. They work in that building, I don't. I hear their stories, and that's what I discuss with the townspeople if they ask me. And to get a Town Hall next door hopefully opens up some parking spaces and gets some of that traffic away from this building that we have to deal with all the time. And we just see that normally with any meetings. Some nights, there's three meetings that went on in this building, every parking spot's taken up, and we have responders coming into this building at night. Some child pops up in between a vehicle, we don't see him, so. But from what I'm hearing tonight, I can't tell the townspeople what the group wants, because I don't know if any decision's been made on that, if it's Stevens Field or the Town Center. So, the only thing I can talk about and support is the staff and what they want due to the safety concerns that I've seen in this building and their voting. And I just want a good fire alarm system, that's all.
As a committee member, I came onto the committee not promoting my own ideas, but being told, "This is what has been decided by the Facilities Committee. This is what the- the selectmen have said. This is what the committee is to educate the public about." Obviously, there's a lot more. What am I, as a committee member, now expected to do? Basic question. What has changed? What is my charge? Do I listen to what the original charge was? Do I listen to what's being said tonight? Do I put in my own opinion, which is a combination? So, where am I?
Can I read something? I'm the designated reader tonight, so I thought I'd keep reading. This is the Town Center Vision Committee charge that you've all heard about. So, the- here's our- these are our march orders, which I think we need to- "The Town Center, the TCVC will ensure that the following points are addressed: Current state of Town Center buildings, including code and specifically ADA issues." Okay. We talked a lot about that tonight, we're all on board with that. "Two, details of the strategy, including the optional site of a newly constructed Town Hall on Stevens Field, if the purchase of the lead church property can't be accomplished." So according to this charge of this committee, we're supposed to talk about Stevens Field. I heard tonight that we weren't supposed to talk about Stevens Field. So, I'm confused. So, so anyway, I mean, right there at Stevens Field is written in our charge to discuss the strategy of that, so.
But only if the other one fails.
Right. But it's in the conversation.
I agree, it should be in the conversation.
Vote no for the church property, you get Stevens Field.
But it's not as simple as that.
So those choices should be presented at the same time. If- if we decide here, you know, the only thing we're bringing forward is the- is the whole wall of axle with the- as the center of Town- in Disney Town Center, then we haven't given people options that's discussed here.
That's why I say it's- we've confused the- the charge, and I think it should be very clear what our charge is. And it has come down to, I've heard at least one selectman say, "We need the land," and that is not tied to Stevens Field.
It's also not tied to the project. I mean, what I've heard tonight is, "We want the land regardless."
Yes.
That charge says, "Oh, vote no on Stevens- vote no on the land and you get Stevens Field." I don't like that.
No.
I'd like us to do the land and have it in our back pocket and still move the Town Hall if we want.
That's why I'm confused.
Okay. I'm right with you.
I think, maybe we brought it up early on in our conversation, so I'm gonna paraphrase what you said. The- the voter wants to know what the options are. And the thing is, the selectmen are promoting Town Center, if we don't get the church property, for some reason. Because even if we go through the negotiation with the church, we put on the warrants, people can still say no. They- that's- that's their option. But I think what maybe we're saying before, we need to tell them what all the options are. So, one, we're advocating for the- the church property, that's a good idea. And if we get the church property, the Town Hall will go on. The Town Center property, the church property. If that doesn't pass, if the negotiations with the church fall down for some reason, or if the voters vote that down, then we're stuck. Well, stuck, but our backup position, as according to Facilities Recommendation, Facilities Committee Recommendation, is to go to Stevens Field. So they need to know that. If I'm a voter, I wanna know what all those particular options are. So if this gets voted down, this is what's gonna happen. So I- I agree with her, that they need to know what those particular options are, so they can make an informed choice.
But that still leaves it, if we don't get the land, we get Stevens Field. What about- how can we leave it, we get the land, or we don't get the land, we get Stevens Field, or we don't get the Stevens Field? That's two questions.
Well, based on what the Facilities Committee said and what the board is promoting, that's fourth option, if you will.
So we've lost- we've lost the ability to get the land, because the people that want Stevens Field aren't gonna buy the land.
Good.
Good. There you go.
Good.
That's an option. You know, I think that part of the problem is, the whole question is totally covered by whether or not we purchase the property. Instead- Instead, would it make sense to ask the, ask the voters the question, do you want the town hall over there? And if so, are we going to have to buy a piece of property? Or do you want the town hall here? Or just not even talk about the property, do you want town hall over there or do you want it here? So it's not encumbered by the purchase of property.
I asked that question before and it was, it was too complicated, it's too complicated.
You can't ask, do you want the land or do you not want the land?
Well, in terms of the location of the town hall, that's what I was asking.
Same question.
My response was, it's too complicated. Now you're asking them three things, so.
No, I'm just saying, just asking.
No, they're saying.
You want it over there or you want it here?
Isn't that easy?
The problem is, we're potentially asking three questions.
Right, that's what I said, three questions. Because you're asking the question in terms of buying the church property or not, you're asking location of the town hall, and you're asking about drawings for the buildings. So you're asking three things.
Yeah.
I don't mind asking three questions, but, you know.
On my list of questions, I was hoping that we would someday get to some much more fundamental questions than where the town hall is. Under the category of construction quality, these are questions that have not been answered as far as I can tell. Uh, the construction that we're planning, how durable is it? How green is it? How efficient is it? What features are we planning to put in it in the new town hall? Right now, the best that I can say is that what we are planning is whatever $170 a square foot buys us, and we don't know. At one of the board meetings, board or Facilities meeting, I don't remember which, I think it was at the time that the Facilities Committee was presenting their final report to the board, they were asked about energy efficiency. And the answer was, yes, we're, we're going to pay attention to that. But I sat here with, meeting after meeting, with an architect that asked, what does the town of Lee want to build? We can build every, anything from minimum code all the way up to zero energy, and there was never an answer. The architect, his unit cost expected was 200 to 250 a square foot. I cannot quantify what is the difference between 170 a square foot, what that buys you, and what does 250 a square foot buy you? And these are questions that need to be answered, and they have nothing to do with where the town hall is.
Well, I don't see, I don't see how, what you're asking, they're all important questions, definitely. But none of it, in my opinion, fits in the, in our charge. And I think that, I, I think all of those questions need to be asked when we get into refining what other, what, whatever the plan is, but the fundamental thing is, what warrant articles are we going to bring forward? And that's, that's, I think, number, should be number one on our agenda, not talking about what quality of the building is. Important questions, John, you know, we need to address those, but, you know, that's 1918 stuff, I think, 2018, sorry.
Yeah, because I think that's the next iteration, if this gets put forward and it gets passed, I think that's the next iteration, when this particular, um, drawings and stuff, that's when you're going to have those conversations.
That's, that's when you decide what it costs.
Because all those things, you're going to draw how much it costs. Polly, you had a question, I'm sorry?
Just another comment, after all, the committee is called the Town Center Vision Committee. And, you know, the, the presence of the Town Center in the discussion is really hard to advocate for because it gets dominated by the town hall, and a lot of that's understandable. However, the Select Board, as the Select Board moves forward, with whatever warrants, with whatever warrant articles come forward, the Select Board, after all this work, needs to come down on the side of the Town Center, and regardless of where the town hall is placed, the Select Board needs to allow for warrant articles that, uh, allow for the future of the Town Center to happen. And those probably will require ongoing appropriations. So I, you know, it sounds like in, some folks want to design a, a warrant that's lean and mean, uh, and that will, that will effectively solve the most immediate problem, you know, properly, but will leave the rest of the project, uh, dangling. So I side with, uh, John Lacourse, I think the church property needs to be brought forward. And I think that solid arguments on the part of this committee can, can be made to, uh, advocate for the rest of the Town Center buildings and interests.
I have to go.
Nope, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine. It is eight o'clock, so we've been two hours, so unless somebody else has anything that they'd like to add.
Well, I, I feel somewhat obligated, and I know this sometimes comes up when this discussion, which you've been having, you know this, certainly, I've been having it for six years, you've been having it for way longer than I have. A long time ago, the Town Center was defined to mean not just where the current buildings are located, and that seems to be forgotten in a lot of this discussion, because certainly, if one used that definition of Town Center, that's what, I'll use the word aloud, the concept of the library going at the Bricker property. The library was not proposed to stay at Town Center, it was moved to the Bricker property.
That's because there was no chance at the existing parcel.
I'm just saying that at one time, the Town Center, certainly among people that are in this room, was viewed as being a larger piece of geography.
Because there was no chance at the current parcel. Now there is a chance at the current parcel.
I'm just, John, I'm just saying.
Yes.
That people advocated for the library on the Bricker parcel and called it Town Center.
Correct, because there was no alternative.
Well, I don't know whether that's necessarily true or not.
It is true.
It is true.
But it, it was called the bigger Town Center.
If I, just a quick moment, um, thank you for inviting us to come and speak, but if I could just address Pat's, Tricia's, um, question, you know, where do we go from here? I think you guys have your work cut out for you, and I'm happy to put out bullet reports, but addressing, you know, what do I say to people? I think it, it is that two-pronged, or maybe even three-pronged answer, it's like, these are the issues that are facing our town buildings, Town Hall Building, the Library Building, the Annex, all the property, historical work, these are the issues that we're facing. The next step is, well, how can we solve those issues? Say, well, we have a couple different possibilities at, coming at hand. If we have property, we'll be able to expand the library, be able to help the town hall, whether it's building a new town hall at that area or somewhere else, and if that doesn't work, you've got this other plan to build a town hall on another location while still giving the library room to expand or to address our issues. You know, so I think it, it's, it's going to take a real conversation, person by person. I think it really kind of seems like that's what this committee needs to do, is to answer both the needs and possible solutions, and what looks like might be real solutions, which we didn't have a week ago without the possibility of property.
Do you feel that the first thing we have to do is write warrant articles?
I think that would be a good place to start, if you know that you're, that you want to present a particular warrant article, but you also, you don't want to have to be presenting something as if you were promoting a warrant article, because that would mean a different political thing. You're talking about the needs and issues concerning town buildings and what some of the possible solutions are. It's the Select Board then would create the art, the warrant article, that you can then say, Select Board's bringing forth a warrant article, you're not addressing that, you're bringing information. But yeah, I, I think you have to have all those things at hand, all the problems, what the possible solutions are, and where those solutions can actually be implemented.
And what will happen if they're not passed?
Yeah.
So I, I think that's a really important.
Yeah, to have some ideas, at least.
To have, okay, you voted these things down, we're going to have to do some other things.
Do something.
And, and you're going to be spending money doing it, and it may be a temporary measure or you're maybe, you know, a five-year measure, or what, you know. But you're going to have to present that, that this has, something has to be done, you know?
That's.
And I, and that's tricky to write it up, that kind of, you know, and get that point across. We can't just kick it, this can down the street another 10 years.
It's already.
It's, it's already going to be too long before people are going to be in a new town hall. Yeah. In, well, whatever you call it, new town offices, wherever they happen to be. Because town hall will still be town hall, this will be town hall, offices, no matter where it is. Right.
Anything else? Committee has some administrative business to do, you can stay for it, it would be terribly exciting, but you can leave.
Who let that one go? I'll just get rid of the administrative.
Has this, everybody look at the minutes? Any changes? Any changes? I fixed the title. Any changes for the minutes besides the one that John found?
And adding Mr.
Uh, Mr. Jeffries. Yes.
There should be someone who demanded a choice for the warrant, or they're going to lose a year.
And discussion? All those in paper? All right, I'll entertain a motion unless you have something else you want to talk about.
Something I want to talk about.
Okay.
Involve permission from the Select Board.
Permission?
Yes.
Permission.
In order to put together things like a display for library, I think we, we need a place to work. So that two of us or three of us would, to just use upstairs of Town Hall to work on putting a display together.
Put forth the same option that we wanted.
Conservation Commission.
I've never seen you, which is very unusual.
Mr. Brown's movement.
That would be a good idea.
Yes. Anything else?
Oh, I, can I, um, sorry, can I just, I know, I kept saying it, but can I remind everyone of the dates that we're up against?
Yep.
So the first budget public hearing is January 2nd, and that is when the board will review the first draft of the warrant and the default budget, that's by statute. The second public hearing is scheduled for January 16th. The board is scheduled to approve the warrant and the budget, uh, January 22nd, because they all have to be posted no later than January 29th, which is a Monday. So it's Christmas week and then New Year's, so essentially, there's not a lot of time to put warrant article language together if it's going to get on the warrant this year. And if there is going to be an appropriation, it has to be disclosed at a public hearing. So in other words, the board can't wait until the meeting on the 22nd to review a draft warrant article, review and approve a draft warrant article that's asking for money because it had not been revealed at a public hearing.
So as long as we discuss on the second, or the second one.
Or the 16th.
That we say, one, we're considering buying the church property.
And you need a sum certain, you can't, you have to say the dollar amount.
Okay, well, we, if, if, if we go with the counter proposal that they gave, we know what that amount is, and we should know in the few, next few days what the church's disposition is. And hopefully, we can get in to have a tour and get some numbers in terms of how much to tear down that building. So if anything, we can do our best guesstimate, I would say.
Yeah.
In terms of the, um, plans, we have a thing from AGR, but we haven't talked about that, so as long as we discuss it and say, we've got one, I don't want to say it's a bit, but one quote in terms of how much that would cost.
Yeah.
And then we can go and look and see what else we can find. I don't have any problem if we want to see if Barbara Wonderlook can do that for us, I don't know. I don't know what his capabilities are, so.
But I hope you heard the, the committee tonight, I think, and I'll sit in there, can we go for the whole piece instead of try to do this child piece?
I, I think, I, I think our proposal right at the moment is to do for the whole thing.
Okay.
And just see what they have to say. I think you're going to get feedback at the deliberative session in terms of the 60 people or maybe a bunch of people show up because of this particular issue, but at least you'll get the feedback at that particular location on what people think. You're only going to get 60, 90, 100, whatever, it's not going to be the 900 that vote or the 600 that vote, but at least you get an idea in terms of what their thought processes are. And the thing is also, when we come, uh, we're going to have the answers to those questions, you know, in terms of.
Yes.
So that's going to be helpful, I would think, but yeah.
Can you give a best guess of what that amount is going to be, and then at the deliberative session, if it turns out you have more information, it can be changed at that point, right? So write it up with.
Our guesstimate.
Your best guess, and, and then if it has to be changed there, somebody can bring that forth.
But just as long as we bring up the topic.
Right.
That's the particular issue, right?
I, I believe a topic in a dollar amount.
Okay, well, a topic in our best.
Has to have a dollar amount.
Our best estimate.
The dollar amount has to be revealed at the public hearing.
The highest amount would be easier to go down.
If we disclose on the second, we're looking at the church property, uh, tearing down the, that's the other thing that Karen and I spoke about, in the warrant article, we say that the parsonage will be removed, so there's no.
Yeah.
175,000.
Yeah.
And then when we find out, maybe it's 20,000, 25,000 to take it down and get rid of it, we can amend it at deliberative session and say, this is now 200,000, not 175,000.
Yeah.
Bambi's point was good, if you start at the 200.
It's easy to go down, it isn't a good one.
You could go down.
All right.
Right.
Yeah, you don't have to tear down the, you could put the, tear down the parsonage the next year at another warrant, couldn't you?
Well, the town has to insure it, the town has to maintain it.
It's much better to go ahead and do it, if the, you have the Starco people will go on board with this and not say.
And also, I suppose, don't forget, somebody could stand up at the deliberative session, and let's suppose you put it forward at 175, somebody could stand up and say, it's not worth that, 50,000, and the 60 people that are there, say 50,000 or whatever the dollar is.
And that can happen.
And that can happen.
A lot of stuff happens.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Purchases like that, the price is usually in not to exceed.
Right.
Up in state, it's not.
Yeah, we want that in there, so.
Yeah, although I don't think the church, well.
Well, you, you've also got to pay for surveying, you've got legal costs.
Transaction costs.
You don't know what the lawyer's bill is going to be.
Right.
So you have to estimate those.
But we can get an idea from Karen, what those particular costs are to do, because we're going to have to do a subdivision, a sub lot, uh, and there's a cost to do that. Like you said, surveying, but there's transaction cost.
Lot line adjustment?
Yeah. Karen knows how much those things typically cost, so we can put that in. Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you. So you, you ready to move out of town, or what are you, what are you doing, Patrick?
No, it's, it seems to me there needs to be a consensus and opinion between the Select Board and this committee, and certainly the heads of all the certain, seems like there's two distinct.
The thing that I have found so frustrating through this, and... The thing that I have found so frustrating through this, and I've been sitting in on these meetings since last January, I was never a member of the committee, just sat here. Is how much information was made available through meetings, public information meetings, on the website. And it seems like the conversations that we're having now are often, a lot of it is being done in the atmosphere of not having been aware of that. So it's like we're starting at the beginning. And, I mean, you, you have just come in recently, and then that makes, you know, that makes sense, you don't know what went on. But a lot of people in the room have been here for quite a while, and it seems like, were they
I think they were in the room.
All of these things though have come up, as Anne said, and a decision was made. And now
Things that, this, this was not a sudden
They're not accepting that we didn't get our way, so therefore
This has been building for a very long time.
And that's what's been holding us up.
It certainly sounds like there's rehashing, but if these guys aren't gonna be able to sell to the townspeople, there has to be some consensus between
It won't pass.
Both parties, there has to be.
It won't pass.
It will not pass, and we're just gonna continue to do this.
They're going, it won't pass, you know?
So, I, I don't know.
It's like a hostage, hostage situation.
So, and it doesn't sound like, the facilities committee obviously spent a lot of time, right? A lot of time, a lot of preparation, a lot of conversation. But it really, wasn't, wasn't an edict? Do, do we have to follow that to the letter of the law? Or can there be some level of like, let's talk about this, do the townspeople really want this whole vision to be in one place? Or is that place a bigger footprint, like, what's talked about?
Well, the people that spoke at the, where the, the committee was making its decisions on, the people that spoke were the people that wanted it as a community.
So you have, you have one side of the story.
Yeah.
Yeah, the people that showed up at the meeting.
And now
That's what I'm saying, you have, you have one side of the story trying to drive this entire vision for this entire town.
But no one was excluded.
I'm not, that's, by no means am I saying anyone's excluded, I'm just saying there was one, it seems like there, not, I hate to say faction, but one group of people that were of like opinion that are driving this vision for this entire town that seems to have competing visions.
And now they're jumping in with their arguments.
That group was
Ten years was part of it.
That group was the group that showed up at the public presentations. There were two public presentations. Forty-plus people showed up, with about fifty people in the room, counting the committee. And the question was asked, do you prefer two D or five?
Yep.
And there was, it was either one or two votes for five, and all the rest were for two D.
So you take it?
And that happened
Absolutely agree.
That happened at the two public presentations. And then no one showed up for the rest of their meetings. So people had opinions, but they didn't show up to voice them.
But they'll, they'll voice them at voting, right?
Correct.
And that's, that's the problem. It's hard to find out what your typical voter is gonna support, because the people that come to these meetings are the ones that passionate for, passionate against.
Yep.
There's the, what is, I don't remember who it was, the silent majority, they haven't showed up. And I have no idea which way they're gonna go. And that's the problem.
But should we rely on the people that talk to the townsfolk every single day? I mean, I
No, I mean, that's, that's the charge of this committee, is to come up with ways to engage
Right.
and inform the public. But one of the things that the committee was considering is, can we involve the town? The people that are here in town, just because they communicate with a lot of folks.
As, as employees, the employees.
Right, right, but that's, they have a whole long list of things.
We can, can we, it's just a second. The thought is, John and I were talking earlier about creating these things for the library. He would, he, I believe your idea, not mine, but I agree with him, create a subcommittee to work on that. Would anybody like to assist John?
If we brought forth something to build in the new town hall?
Create
Do you think that they've built
One of the, one of the ideas of how to get out the word about the condition of the building.
I would.
The whole, the whole message that we're gonna get out, it starts with the condition
Based on the votes we've had in the past.
What do they call it, display board at the library.
I don't know why the library's going down, that's my personal opinion.
Issues in town.
I mean, that does, it's, I mean, there's no forward-looking vision of this town for youth, for children, for the community, for, it's like
Well, that's, that's part of the whole plan, is that there is that opportunity.
But it doesn't, yeah, no, I, I agree, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in one place. Or it doesn't have to be in one place, I mean, if these guys work with fire and police every day, maybe it bears suits over here.
The idea presented to us is that we would have information about the buildings, maybe one at a time. So we have one display about town hall.
Solve your problem with part people walking through this parking lot all the time. I'm not sure I understand why putting the town hall here would help with that situation.
At first I was thinking that we need to have maybe two boards, switch them out.
Create a separate area, that way.
But it occurred to me here
But they come in here
Well, they would, they would have to be
Right.
So it'd be a separate
Bringing that whole set, or something.
That doesn't mean that the community's still gonna come in, this is a branch building, then.
Set them up back in the room, so that people that come in early can look at it again, check it out.
It's on the website.
So basically, just doing the town hall one, between now and when we meet on the third.
We need to figure out, at least do one and see what it looks like. Right, so, so my idea is, in order to get something like that done, it takes two of us, the three of us, say, okay, we're working it.
They don't necessarily need to be here, though, right?
Get the board and get some, like, pictures printed and write some description and stick it on the board.
But that's part of the plan, that's part of the plan, is that
There's a big table.
The whole, the current town hall would be turned into a public meeting.
We can be working on the next one and find someplace where we could leave it there.
And John has a map, you put, get close to a hundred parking places. The full.
You said something about putting the model up at once.
So there's so much that's not the same.
Only at the deliberative session.
As long as any discussions. And this is, it's, it was
We might be able to put up that at town hall.
Public meetings.
Not all of them.
The public safety complex, but there was no other place to put it.
There is the stage there, the stage is sometimes used for
Use masked way?
Post, if you come to him and ask, do you want a cat?
They, they, it's a different entity, and there's the whole liability thing and insurance.
You can use the tables downstairs in those buildings.
Of that building, but for a couple needs.
Oh, I've seen Girl Scouts in there, I've seen all other organizations in there.
If it should have been designed in a different way, then they should have had They could all be there, and you could highlight, this week you'd highlight
It won't allow to happen.
And next week you'd highlight
So you cannot have a deliberative session in a masked way.
Well, we, the deliberative, the deliberative session does take place.
That's the only
Voting does not
Oh, voting, yeah. Like, like, a live for our, like, these meetings, you have, like, this education session.
They don't allow it.
It was thirty-eight inches by eighteen inches, so one of these would fit.
Risk to the children.
Only one would fit in.
And they would have the idea Well, neither one goes into, it's in the old school.
I've heard the all the
Refineries.
You know, you can't have them, because then they might plant something that's dangerous in there while they're in the meeting.
So it's Take a direction.
Yeah, there's
What's wrong with town hall?
You should have roadblocks.
Go see the display, the end of the sentence.
Yeah, 'cause they have that space For whatever reason. Right at the door that goes into the, uh, where they have the meetings and things in the front. They're, right there, in the hallway on that wall, which is two fifty if you
And other things, you know.
For the whole picture.
But that could go, that could say, go there, or see whatever.
Buildings that are on
Highlighted.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, forget to get a little crisp.
So, who would like to be on this particular group?
I, I, I need to
Absolutely.
So I can't do any
Alright, so, John, you think about doing this, between Christmas and New Year's?
It's interesting, it's, it's good to see the difference in the works, so too.
I mean, if you let me know when you're working, I'll, I'll come around.
Show us
I'm thinking that we need to get started, and some of the things like this Absolutely.
And then a fraction
No one's gonna vote against this, we're not saying, you know, is the town hall good or not? It's bad.
Or was here, and a lot of people were at those meetings.
Explain some of these photos.
And maybe then voice their opinion.
Well, this, this is specific.
So, why don't we, see if we can pick a tone?
Yeah, give it, give us
And I don't mind, I've been out either, I've got those pictures, so I can bring them, so.
I'm honored to have one of these done for the third, for our next meeting.
The majority of them don't live in town.
Four.
So they don't
Get it up as soon as possible.
That's what I'm saying, so it has to be in the middle of Christmas and New Year's. Yeah, yes. And I'm, I'm around
The thing that's, to me, frustrating is that
Other than just running, running around locally to family, but I'm in town. Well, I think it ought to be at least two. I don't think I should Absolutely. Yeah, putting it up in the scene, yeah, I would look great, I'll stick it up to the library.
I'm happy, it's in fact, it sounds like everybody's happy with that.
You know, we'll just do it.
Those surveys are done.
The four of us will
Give me a date.
We'll invite the rest of them if they wanna come together.
Yeah, yeah, just do it that way, and then that way.
I mean, so they have to drive
We'll just find some time that week.
I'd like to go to the library.
I'm not gonna tell you the way, to be honest with you. I just think there needs to be a consensus between both of them, whenever we get anything passed.
But it's, so nothing just, it was a select board meeting yesterday here.
They're different colors, they're one solid color on the front, the back is tin cardboard with great black printing on it. But there it goes, she says it doesn't matter because you see one side.
I mean, eleven people
Get the ones that are perforated, 'cause they're lasting.
At these meetings.
Yes, they're, they're not just cardboard, they're perforations, they're like, it looks like cardboard, but they're more sturdy. Yeah, they're sturdier.
Yeah, these are cordwood.
Okay, good.
To allow
Thirty-six inches high.
Yep.
But they're more expensive than five dollars.
Sure.
Future.
Like a future, right? Um, the cardboard ones
That was in light
Corrosive cardboard, and staples were seven nine.
They said, you're dropping it.
Michael's of five forty-nine.
Um, but you can read these on YouTube.
We also, all the ones.
What, what everybody said, and the interesting things. And that doesn't mean that, obviously, not in monolithic voice.
Sure, of course.
It was very different.
The information on here, unless it looks like it's spent on the paper.
It's great.
Leave the stickers on how much it costs on the backside, so that we can see. Alright, so
Okay, I have trouble with the first and third Thursday, particularly in the morning, but other than that
How, actually getting around
Well, this will be the fourth.
I thought a survey of the people where somebody actually went out and had questions Was really the way to
Why don't you just, why don't you be in charge of that, and just invite everybody, say, remain, whatever.
So people out volunteering sheets of paper.
After Christmas. Why not?
It's difficult, because a lot of people work at different times, and are available to answer.
We're doing something tomorrow.
And
Especially this time of year.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So getting volunteers to do that.
Motion.
Alright, Pat, you did, Ben's taking it. All's in favor? Alright, good night, thank you for coming.